Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Education's November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Called to session. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Reading of the mission statement. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families in our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Next up is the approval of the revised agenda. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is the recognition for the fire safety poster winners. We'd like to move that.
Yep, I'll take over that. Before we do that, we do have a few students who just want to welcome us here to Central Valley. So before we recognize the fire safety poster winners, I just want to recognize Dr. I can't see her here.
There she is.
Okay, hi.
I'm here. Hi, good evening. Welcome to Central Valley. We are pleased to be able to host this evening's board meeting. And this evening, we would like to ask some of our students from Mrs. Matola and Mrs. Mastrowan's class to join us at the podium. As Mrs. Matola and Mrs. Mastrowan's class with the season of the holidays that we're entering and in alignment with our Choose Love curriculum, they have been working on a gratitude project, and they'd like to share a little bit about that gratitude project, as well as how they continue to offer gratitude beyond this season. With that, I would please ask Nicole Zumis, Zachary Inkledon, Evan Donahue, Jackson Bear, Marquis Menus, Tessa Corcello, and Leandra Kukaj to please come up.
Good evening, Board of Education, Central Office and Families. This month, Mrs. Matola and Mrs. Mastrowan's classes began our gratitude project. We are practicing for people, places, and things that we are grateful for. Part of our gratitude project is also to thank and honor others.
Team Matola and Team Mastrowan chose to sponsor a wreath as part of the Wreaths Across America program. We honor Mr. Newhouse as he serves in the Navy and serves as our county executive. He follows the mission to remember, honor, and teach. He does this as being part of the military and as our county executive.
Tonight, we continue practicing.
Tonight, we continue practicing our gratitude by saying thank you to our Board of Education. We thank our board members who served or do serve in the military or have family members who serve in the military. We also thank you for serving our community by following the tenets of remember, honor, and teach for school district.
Remember, thank you to our Board of Education for always remembering the important job you have helped to build a strong school community. You remember those who served before you and build on the work they have done.
Thank you to our Board of Education for honoring your commitment to the school district. You honor everyone's voice by listening and do your best to use ideas and thoughts in order to build a stronger school district.
Thank you to our Board of Education for always working hard. You make sure that all the students have what they need in order to learn and succeed.
Thank you, Board of Education members, for your service to Central Valley Elementary School and our whole entire school district. We are grateful for you.
Okay, we are now going to, sorry, this is super far away. We are now going to have our fire safety poster contest winners recognized. A few things just before students come up. We're going to begin with Sapphire with Ms. Caldwell. She's going to announce those who are being recognized from Sapphire Elementary. Students, when you come up, you are going to, we're going to stand up here, you're going to come onto the stage. We'll have two board members who will help hand out certificates and shake hands. You'll wait here. Once your school is done, if everyone could hold their applause until the entire school is done, once Sapphire's done, we'll give them a round of applause. And then the students, you'll be dismissed to the hallway for extra pictures. Parents, once your children are done up on the stage, you can head out with them to the hallway for extra pictures there as well. Did I miss anything, Ms. Penley? No, I think so. All right. So with that, before we call it, Ms. Caldwell, I'd like to recognize Mr. Joseph Tripoto, who's our Director of Health, Safety, and Security here in Monroe Woodbury.
I'm happy to be here tonight. First of all, before I begin, I want to say that it's extremely nice to see so many of our kids and their families here tonight in the audience. I thank you for being here, and it will be my pleasure to announce the winners of the two thousand and twenty-three Michael J. Fitzhula Jr. Fire Safety Poster Contest. Each year, the school district invites local firefighters to come to the district and do a fire safety presentation. And at the same time, our local firefighters take the time to judge the artwork of our students, and then they select the winners of the contest. Michael J. Fitzhula Jr. was someone who worked for the district many years ago, and he served as the Director of Health, Safety, and Security for twenty years. He lost his battle with cancer back in two thousand and nine, but his contributions and impact to the district were vast and indelible, and we honor and remember him with this contest and the award. So this year's theme was Cooking Safety Starts With You: Pay Attention to Fire Prevention. For the families who worked with the kids at home to create these posters, we want to thank you. Obviously, your time and interest goes a long way in making this contest a success. Okay, so with that, are we all ready? All right, great. First up, from Sapphire Elementary, we have Ms. Caitlin Caldwell.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Tripoto. We're still excited to celebrate our students. Thank you again to our fire department members who joined us, who brought the fire trucks, our K-one kiddos, our UPK kindergarten and first grade kiddos. We're very excited, so we're happy to have you all. First, I'd like to invite Alia Malik, one of our first grade students. Congratulations, Alia, if you're here. Here she comes. Leila Hoxhurst Perez. Samuel Flores Navarrete. Scarlett O'Connor. And Bian Modi. Congratulations to all of the winners recognized from Sapphire.
I am very proud of our Smith Clovers who are represented here tonight, so please come on up. Our first winner is Alexander Castro Serteau. Then we have Adeline Flores. Brianna Reyes-Melia. Eden Crespo Medina. Ian Guadarama. Jack Beams. Maria Nagra. And Vivian Kouchard. Congratulations to our Smith Clovers.
If all Smith Clove and Sapphire students and their parents could go to the lobby, they'll take some pictures out there. Next up, from Central Valley Elementary, we have Dr. Christine Alt and Mr. Mike Barone.
We are so proud of our Central Valley students, and we would like to congratulate and welcome Yost Marie Gonzalez Cruz. Leanna Lackey. Ava Verna.
And continuing with fourth grade, Harlow Salaya. Gia Saravia. And fifth grade, Madeline Hoffman. Jaclyn Chen.
Congratulations. With that, with all Central Valley Elementary, parents and students, please head their way to the lobby for pictures. Next up, from North Main Elementary, we have Mr. Joe Cotto and Mr. Roger Davis.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank, first of all, our volunteer firemen for giving their time up in the middle of the day to come in with the trucks. That's to give them a shout out. It's not easy, and we really appreciate that. I'm going to read off the names of the second and third grade, and anyone that's ever heard me do announcements in the middle school know that I do the best I can with names, but if I do kind of destroy your name, Mr. Davis will buy you ice cream for lunch tomorrow, so that's a shout out to them. He just heard that for the first time. So for our second grade winners, we have Alyssa Abreu. Nicholas Diaz. And Christian Ribeiro. And for our third grade, we have Luna Rodriguez. Amelia Baja. And Angie Miranda Duarte.
Our fourth graders, we have Ashley Abreu. Ariana Rigaldo. Remesherbe Ochoa. For our fifth graders, we have Emma Ruiz. Dylan Reyes Corino. And Jacob Smith. Congratulations to all our North Mainers.
And with the parents and the students of all of the North Main Elementary School, go to the lobby for pictures. Thank you. And next up, from Pine Tree Elementary, we have Dr. Karen Morales.
Good evening. Mr. Martin could not be here to join me tonight, but I want to make sure that on behalf of Mr. Martin, we thank our fire departments as well as all of our students who participated. So in second grade, congratulations to Kun Sharma. Christian Castro Barasso. Andrew Valdez. In third grade, congratulations to Scarlett Shim. Maroche Irfan. And Isling Gormley. Fourth graders, congratulations to Apreer Smith. Emily McElroy. Maeve Adler. And Mia Cortez. And our fifth grade, congratulations go to Alyssa Lee Lynn and Joseph Feeny.
Hers had a spelling error. Emily, yours has a typo. We're going to get you a new one, so your name is spelled correctly. That might be why you're not finding it. So then we're going to get you the right one.
And with that, will the students and the parents from Pine Tree Elementary please make their way to the lobby where they will take a picture? Before ending, I just want to say a big congratulations to all of our students, and thanks again to all of our families, the administrators, and the firefighters who helped make all of this possible. Thank you.
Next up on the schedule is the National Merit Scholarship students, Dr. Hassler.
Sure. In October of two thousand and twenty-two, over one point three million high school students sat and took the PSAT exam, which automatically entered them into the two thousand and twenty-four competition for the National Merit Scholarship Program: Recognition and Scholarships. Nearly all program participants are now seniors and planning to enter college in two thousand and twenty-four. The process works when the National Merit Scholarship Committee takes those one point three million PSAT results, and they aggregate the data, and they will it down to approximately fifty thousand high-scoring participants that qualify for actual program recognition. They represent the top four percent of all one point three million students that took the exam. Out of that fifty thousand, approximately thirty-four thousand are then identified as commended students. We would like to congratulate our four National Merit Scholarship commended students, and I'd like to invite, I don't know which two board member members are coming up for this. All right? Who's coming up?
He wants someone to present.
Oh, there you go. All right. And Ms. McLeary. Our first recipient is Isaac Hong. Our second recipient is Alexia Joseph. Our third recipient is Julia Landris. And our fourth recipient is James Nickel. Unfortunately, James is unable to be here this evening.
Just waiting for Dr. Hassler to come back up. It's a very big echo. Update on questions or comments raised from interested citizens from the last meeting. I have an update. We had a community member come in and speak about the Friday Night Lights in support of kids' sports, and gave a very good detailed explanation about the things we could and should consider. I want to thank her for coming out, and I want you to know that their suggestions are being taken under advisement and will be looked at for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five season. So thank you very much. We also had a community member come out and speak on contracts and transparency in discussions with the board. I want to affirm that when items warrant deeper discussion by the Board of Ed, we are active and inquisitive to ensure that our understanding is fully had before we vote on any item. And matters of personnel are not appropriate for public discussion or held in an executive session format. That's all I have for the follow-ups. We do have questions or comments from interested citizens, and Mr. Daryl McElroy is up.
Good evening. I want to first wish the superintendent well and look forward to her return and in the interim, working with Dr. Hassler in his capacity, assuming everything goes well in probably thirty minutes. I also wanted to recognize our SRPs. Next Tuesday, I believe, is SRP Day, where we recognize all of the wonderful professionals who work on our school buildings, who actually do the magic in the offices and food service, the monitors, teacher aides, safety officers, the nurses. We can't do what we do in the classroom without them. And also, just to get this out of the way now, you know, wishing everybody a happy and healthy holiday season. As the MWTA president, I'm speaking tonight on behalf of both the MWTA and the MWEA and our nearly one thousand members, many of whom are district residents or have community ties to folks who are weighing the capital budget vote being held on December fifth. After reviewing the proposal, I believe that it should be supported not only by my members, but also the residents of the community as well. The project itself makes important investments in all seven buildings to address critical areas related to safety and infrastructure that could be done in a cost-effective manner and with a zero tax levy impact. The district considered community feedback from last year's failed bond vote and right-sized this project. I would remind folks that no sooner did the budget, or bond not pass last year, one of the boilers in Pine Tree finally gave up. Why continue to do more costly short-term fixes when we can do long-term, cost-effective ones instead? I understand that there are folks who may not like at least one of the items on the agenda this evening, and I completely understand that concern. I have thoughts as well, but I do not think that voting the bond project down is the best way to express disagreement with that or any other decision the district makes. You have elected board members that you could speak to about your concerns, and if they seek reelection, you can hold them accountable at that point. It is the view of the MWTA that the students and the staff need these improvements now. They need learning spaces that are safe with upgraded fire alarms and carbon monoxide devices, security vestibules in three buildings, and new PA systems to increase rapid communication, just to name a few items. We also need buildings with heat during the cold months and buildings that don't have roofing issues. Even some of the facility upgrades will improve outdoor physical education classroom spaces and athletic areas that our students, student athletes, and community use. This project does not have everything that my members feel is needed. We believe strongly that work needs to be done to provide climate control in the school buildings that do not have air conditioning because students can't learn, and teachers, administrators, and SRPs can't do their jobs if they are literally melting. We would also like the district to make every effort to fast-track the implementation of door swipe systems in all buildings that do not presently have them. My members also wrote very passionately to the district last year about other needs that they would like to see addressed with the additional state aid that the district received last year. It is our hope that in the upcoming budget planning season, that there is serious consideration given to the following priorities. Hiring additional school counselors, school social workers, and school psychologists to support the increasing needs of our students, which only grew as a result of the pandemic. Hiring additional teaching assistants to provide support in classes that have large numbers of students with IEPs, 504s, and ENL needs. Hiring additional clerical staff to support all of the staff in the buildings. And devoting more resources to early intervention so that our students will have improved educational outcomes in the long term, and it will also reduce costs. Over the last several years, there is a growing concern among my members about the apparent reluctance to make significant investments in these areas. We believe that there is community support for budgetary spending that directly affects and benefits students in and out of the classroom. The number of students in any given class or school building does not actually tell the whole picture. For a number of reasons, our students' needs are greater now compared to even five years ago, and making staffing decisions as if we are dealing simply with numbers on a balance sheet instead of educating and supporting children and their families is shortsighted and will ultimately only short-change our students. In closing, I would ask the community, including members of the MWTA and EA, to support the bond referendum on December fifth. It just makes sense. It is a necessary and fiscally responsible first step to addressing important needs that should not be put off any longer. We will always continue to advocate for what we believe are needed investments for our students, and as always, look forward to partnering with stakeholders in future discussions about spending priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda, we have presentations. We have a presentation of a property tax exemption for firefighters and ambulance workers. Deputy Commissioner Vinnie Tensaki.
There's a couple letters written there. All right, first, thank you for having me come down here and speak about the tax credit and tax exemption for volunteer fire and EMS workers. My name is Vinnie Tensali. I am a deputy commissioner with the Orange County Emergency Services in charge of the fire service. I'm also a past chief of the Monroe Fire Department, twenty-nine-year member of the Monbasha Fire Company. I also am a Monroe Woodbury alumni. I'm not going to say how long ago. I'll just say GPS says this is Central Valley Elementary, but, you know, in my head, it's still a middle school, so I'll give you a little timeframe. So I also live in the Monroe Woodbury School District still, so, and I have a young child that's going to be... that's going to be entering the school district soon. So, I'm very familiar with the school district, and I want to thank you for having me speak about this important incentive. And I think it is fitting that we're here on the day where you are awarding presentations, these great presentations for fire safety. It was mentioned Mike Fitzhugh. I remember doing fire prevention with Mike Fitzhugh when I first joined the fire department, and I'm glad to see his legacy continues to this day. He was a great man, and he was a very big proponent of fire safety. What we're here to talk about is a tax incentive that the governor had passed in 2022. It is a up to 10% off your school tax or any municipality for a volunteer fire or EMS worker. Volunteer fire and EMS, especially in this area, is key. It's a backbone of the emergency services. The volunteers are what staff are EMS rigs, and staff are fire departments. The fire departments that cover this area, you have quite a few. It's not just Monroe and Woodbury. You also have agencies in parts of Chester, Tuxedo, South Blooming Grove, which you're all familiar with. But all told, these agencies respond day in and day out to emergencies throughout both the areas, throughout the entire school district area. In fact, in 2022, EMS agencies ran a total of 2,800 calls. Fire departments ran a total, the fire departments that cover the area, a total of 2,241 alarms. And that's done all by volunteers. There are some paid staff within EMS, but majority is volunteer personnel. Not only the calls they run, but we talk about fire safety. The firefighters are here doing fire prevention, are all volunteers. They're on their own time doing this work. And this tax exemption was put in place because volunteering in the fire service and EMS service is dwindling. It's continuing a downward trend, as is volunteering throughout the nation. We have, there's a task force put in place on the state level to try and address this, and there's really not one solution that's going to fix the volunteering problem, but it's a culmination of multitude of different efforts that are going to take, that's going to take to make this work and to bring back volunteering. And this is one of them. For recruiting members, a tax incentive helps them. It helps recruit new members coming in. It also retains them, because if you have a member that's been in the service quite a while, doesn't have as much time, they're going to stick around a little bit longer if there's an incentive that helps them financially, which will help them stay in the community as well. The tax incentive that the governor had put in place, it's up to 10%, but it requires each municipality to adopt it, and that's why we're here to bring it forth to the school district. Countywide, there's about a handful of school districts that have already adopted this. I am very happy with the response so far in the schools. It seems like all schools are in favor, all districts, or most of them are in favor of it, and seem to be understanding the issues and what it helps with. There's, again, a handful that have already adopted it, and I know a handful that are in the process, and a lot of them are in the process as you are right now talking about it, and hopefully will get in place for the 2025 tax year. The exemption, what it allows is for a member who's been in two years or more, who is an active fire EMS personnel, to receive 10% off their tax assessment. They will receive it as long as they're active, and it's up to 10% that can be set within the boards. I will say, every municipality, every school district in Orange County that has passed it, has passed it at the 10% level. They've also, you can do it from a year above up until five years of membership active to qualify for it. Majority have enacted it at the two-year, at the two-year, actually, it's a two-year minimum, and then up to five. Most have enacted it for the two years. It allows for, again, two years active, and as long as you stay active, you will maintain this 10% or up to 10% exemption. After you receive, after you achieve 20 years of active service, you then have it as a permanent exemption. It remains with your spouse if you were to pass until, if that spouse remarries, then it does not stay with them. It only stays with them as long as they're unmarried, and if they move, it does not carry with them. So, it's basically, you know, if somebody passes away and they've reached that 20 years, they keep it. Also, if somebody dies, you know, in the line of duty, that person, if they've achieved five years, their spouse would also receive it on a permanent basis. We looked at it. One of the things I was asked for is to get the numbers together as to an estimate of how many individuals this would qualify this within the agencies. I did contact the different fire departments and the EMS agencies, and right now, the total we have is about 130 that would qualify for this. I think what we're seeing is there is a lot that are renting or are, you know, young and living with family, parents, and the family. They unfortunately do not qualify, obviously, unless they're a home property owner, but when we tally the numbers, it's about 130. And these are the people that are, again, responding to calls every day, whether it be in their community or to the schools. In fact, I think there was an alarm yesterday that would verify an alarm had at the school, at the high school. So, again, these are individuals that are providing service to our community and to your school district and your facilities. Overall, it's really, I can't stress the importance of it. We're trying whatever we can to keep our volunteers. If we were to have to go into a career department, I can't even explain to you what the tax impact would be. It would be staggering. What we are doing on a daily basis right now with the amount of volunteers we have is amazing. Volunteer personnel really step up day in and day out. But we are at a point where unless we start making changes, it's not looking good for the future. So that's what we're here to bring forth to the board here. We do have representatives from our local agencies here. Just real quick to introduce them. Woodbury Fire Chief Chris Burke, Woodbury EMS Captain Bob Stein, Woodbury Past Captain, Past Assistant Chief Ed Hoffman. I'm sorry, I didn't get your name before.
EMT.
EMT with Woodbury. Debbie Van Bruusen?
Yeah.
Van Bruusen. Oh, my God.
He was close.
My name's bad enough, so, sorry. President of Woodbury EMS, and Wayne Chan, who's president of Monroe EMS. I can't even tally up the amount of years of service that are standing right behind me here, but trust me, they've been here for this community a long time, and I do think it's time that the municipalities, as well as the school district, are here to stand by them. Do you guys have anything before I?
Thank you.
All right. Are there any questions for me? I don't know if you guys have anything.
Debbie, want to say something?
Yeah. Could I say something? Hi, I'm Debbie Beth, president of Woodbury Ambulance, and I'd just like to point out that, let you know that the situation in our community is very grave. We don't want to get into a situation where somebody calls an ambulance and nobody shows up. Just to give you an idea, I just retired personally from my job after 30 years, and I am a volunteer. I am working today, tomorrow, and Friday volunteering as an EMT, because there's nobody else in our agency that can do it. The situation is grave. We really, you know, think that this incentive is wonderful, and it truly would go a long way towards saving lives. We really ask for your consideration and ask that you understand just how important it is, because it's major. I know that we can recruit other individuals and residents if this was passed, so we do ask for your consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I just have a question. Do we have all of that information that you can share with the rest of us?
I don't have any.
Okay, so can I ask that you send that to our district clerk?
Absolutely.
So that it can be disseminated to all of us?
Absolutely. Yes. And I can actually give a sample of resolution to that was passed within some of the other school districts in the county, if that will help.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation.
Okay. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Next up is Dr. Hassler with the region's presentation.
We're actually going to go down into the audience, and the screen's going to drop down, so that way you can see the presentation. There's a copy of the presentation at each of your places, if you want to bring it down. I apologize for my back. Sorry. So, I'd like to begin just by thanking the board for the opportunity to be able to present our June 2023 region's results. I'd also like to thank the middle school and high school administration for assisting in reviewing all of this data, as well as Kristen Ranher from our Micro Computer Center, and our various department chairs, and the teachers within each of the various departments in going through and reviewing this data and understanding the, you know, the various items that impacted our students' performance. So, this is a new slide that I added into last year's presentation, because it's important to add a little bit of context in terms of what's transpired over the last couple of years with the region's exams. In June of 2020, which was the beginning of COVID, the region's exams were canceled. June of 2020, August of 2020, January of 2021, August of 2021, and January 22, they were all canceled. Students were given exemptions. There was no opportunity for them to take any region's exams. They were automatically given exemptions on those exams as long as they were enrolled in a course that culminated in a region's exam and passed that course, meaning that they got an E on their transcript, and the requirement that they would have needed in order to be able to receive a region's diploma was granted to them. They fulfilled that requirement by receiving the E exemption for that. They started to administer region's exams in June of 2021. However, the 2021 school year was the year that we were hybrid, and some students had the ability to be able to be remote, so they were offered in a very limited capacity. Only the algebra, earth science, ELA, and living environment exams were offered, and only students who were physically present in the building were given the opportunity to be able to take that exam. Any remote students did not have to come in in order to be able to take the exam. Any student that didn't take the exam was automatically exempted from that exam. Geometry, Algebra II, Chemistry, Physics, Global Studies, and US History were all canceled in June of 2021. I share this with you because when I show you the various graphs of our results, you'll see these gaps in the various graphs that I show. June of 2022 was the first year back that full region's exams were administered, with the exception of the US History exam. It was canceled. Something of note, however, that continued from June of 2022 to June of 2023 was on May 16, 2022, the State Ed Department announced the expansion of an appeal opportunity to students to graduate with a lower score on the region's exams through August of 2023, meaning, due to COVID, any student who scored between a 50 and a 64 on any of the region's exams was given the opportunity to be able to appeal to fulfill the graduation requirement, which was previously a 65, to not have to retake the exam and still be able to pass that exam and graduate and fulfill that requirement by scoring between a 50 and a 64, provided that they passed the class. And that had some implications in terms of reporting that I'll share with you as I go through and review the data. So, yes. Sure.
Because we don't have the microphones here, it would be better to back on stage and ask questions.
Sure, that's fine. Yep. So that way, yes, because that way, everybody will be able to hear the, yep, sure. So, our first region's exams that I'll report on are from our math department. So, as I showed, as I shared with you earlier, you'll see that I have region's results from June of 2014 through June of 2019, and then they pick up again in June of 2022 and then June of 2023. I also included at the bottom the number of students who actually sat for that exam. So, June of 2022, the results that I presented this time last year, we had a 75% passing rate, and June of 2023, we had 436 students sit for the exam, and then we had an 80% passing rate. Now, again, when I say passing rate, that means that 80% of the 436 students got above a score of 65 on that exam. If you were to go into our school report card for the high school, you would see 80% for our region's performance rate on the algebra exam for June of 2023. However, I want to note something, that the way that the exams are scored is not the way that we are typically familiar with exams being scored, meaning, when I say a 65, a score of 65 is passing, there are actually conversion charts that the students take the exam, they get a raw score on that exam, and then a conversion chart is used in order to be able to identify what the student's overall score is. So, for example, on the algebra exam, the highest possible score, raw score, is a total of 86 points on the algebra exam, meaning if a student got 86 out of 86 points, all multiple choice, all constructed response, extended response questions correct, they would have gotten a total of 86 points, which would have gotten them 100. However, if a student received a 43 out of 86 points, meaning if they got half of the points correct, based upon the conversion chart, they actually would have received a 77 on their overall score. So, again, even though the percentage, we're familiar with the traditional percentage method of calculating test results, if a student got 43 points out of the 86 using the conversion chart, they would have gotten an overall score of 77 on that exam. So, you can't apply traditional scoring methodology to the way that the students perform on that. You would have to look at the conversion chart individually for each of the region's exams. Now, I had mentioned the appeals previously. Out of the 436 students that took the algebra exam in June of 2023, we had 43 students who scored between a 50 and a 64, who received an appeal to graduate with a higher score on that exam, which is roughly 10%, meaning those 43 students will no longer have to sit the way that they previously had, even though they got below the 65. They will not have to sit for the exam in the future because they fell within that We also have a cohort of students at the middle school who also sit for the algebra region's exam. In June of 2023, we had 118 students sit for the algebra regions in the middle school, and all 118 passed the exam. I should also, I should also note that the June of 2023 results, where we had 436 students sit for the exam, that does not include the cohort of students from June of 2022 who were eighth graders who took the exam in the middle school the previous year. So, total, when you combine our results from the cohort of kids that took it when they were in eighth grade in the middle school in 2022, that was 144 students. 100% of those students passed the exam. They're also part of the cohort of students in June of 2023 that sat for the exam predominantly in ninth grade. The other two region's exams that are administered in the math department, we offer the geometry exam. The majority of students take it when they are sophomores. However, the cohort of kids, 144 kids that took the algebra exam often will go into geometry as ninth graders, so we have graders. So, we had, in June of 2023, 382 overall students who sat for the Geometry Regents' exam, and we had an 82% passing rate on that exam. Again, that's 65 and above. There were a total of 36 students that received an appeal on that exam, which accounted for approximately an additional 9% of those students. Again, 36 students that will not have to take that exam moving forward. The final math exam that we administer our Regents in is Algebra II. We had 288 students that sat for that exam. 82% of them passed. I actually sat with Stacy Rubin, who's the Math Department Chair at the high school, to talk about this a little bit. And one of the things that she pointed out to me was, this cohort of students, that the majority of them who sat for the Algebra II exam, were in Algebra I during the 2021 school year, which was the year that we were hybrid. And she said that that's our final cohort, where the level of instruction that they received in Algebra I was very different than the traditional instruction that the kids are receiving on a daily basis in person. And she said she believes that, you know, talking to the math teachers and looking how they performed, they believe that that was a factor for that specific cohort of students. The next exam is the Biology/Living Environment exam. One of the things that I'm going to talk about a little bit later on is a quick update on graduation requirements. Algebra I, Biology are two of the entry-level exams that kids are required to in order to get a Regents' diploma. They have to pass a Math, a Science, an ELA, and a Social Studies Regents' exam. Biology is typically the entry-level Regents that kids typically take. This past year, we had 442 students who sat for the exam. 73% of them got above a 65. Similar to the Algebra Regents' exam, we had 130 students in eighth grade also sit for the Biology Regents' exam. All 130 of them passed. But again, in June of 2022, we had 124 eighth graders sit for the Biology exam that are also part of that June of 2023 Regents cohort that took it the previous year when they were eighth graders in the Middle School. Also, out of that 442 cohorts of students, we had 66 students that received an appeal in Biology, scoring between a 50 and a 64, for a total of approximately 15% of that cohort of students. Earth Science is the next assessment that we administer. We had 543 students who sat for the exam. There was an increase in our passing rate. We went from a 70% passing rate of 507 students in 2022 to a 73% passing rate in 2023. We also had an increase in the number of students overall who took the exam. We had a reduction in the number of students that were granted an appeal in the exam. There were only 69 students that received an appeal compared to 91 in the '22 school year, and that 69 students out of the 543 represents 13% of that overall population of students. The next science exam that we administer is the Chemistry Regents. There were 300 students that sat for that exam. We had an increase in our passing rate from 71% in June of 2022 to 80% in June of 2023. And similarly, we had an increase from 54% on the Physics Regents, from June of 2022 up to 58% in June of 2023. Couple of items to note, similar to what I was speaking about earlier. You notice the gradual decline in the number of students that need to take the Science exam. The reason being is, even if students are going for a Regents of Advanced Designation, they would need to pass three math exams in order to get that diploma. They would need to pass two science exams in order to be able to get that diploma, which is the reason why you see a pretty significant drop from the Earth Science Regents, where we had 543 students, down to 300 in Chemistry, and down to 102 in Physics. Another reason why there was a drop between 2019, 2022, and 2023 was, prior to June of 2022, 2019, and back, our AP Physics I course, the majority of those students would also sit for the Regents' exam, because the original AP Physics curriculum was fairly closely aligned to the Regents' curriculum, and the students were prepared in order to be able to sit for that exam. Since then, the College Board has shifted the curriculum in AP Physics slightly, where it doesn't align as well to the New York State Physics curriculum. So, the majority of our students that are in AP Physics no longer sit for that Physics exam. So, the majority of the students that take that Physics exam are only the students that take it at the Regents' level course, not the AP level course. Regarding the appeals, we had 49 students who were granted an appeal in Chemistry, which was 16% in 2023, and we had 26 students in Physics that received the appeal, which is approximately 25%. The next series of exams are our Social Studies exams. The first exam is the Global History and Geography exam. That exam is administered to students typically in 10th grade. This past year, we had 556 students. The reason why I have the various symbols underneath the Global exam is because the Global exam has gone through a series of phases of standards, where the current standards that are being used to align our curriculum is the New York State Social Studies Framework. And in moving to that new set of standards, they evolved the Regents' exams over various years. So, it's hard to compare apples to apples because of the variations of the exams along the way. However, last year, June of 2022, we had 90% of our students who passed that exam out of the 594 that took it. This past year, we had a dip down to 84%, where 556 students overall took that exam. On the Global exam, we had 44 students, roughly 8% of them, that received the appeal. I actually, I sat and spoke to Mr. McElroy, the Social Studies Department Chair, about the results, and one of the things that he had shared that he's been working on with the teachers in looking at the June of 2023 exam was a couple of items. One of them is the exam consists of a series of multiple choice questions, as well as critical response questions, you know, extended response questions, where kids have to look at various different documents and analyze them and synthesize them. And one of the things that they noticed this year, that this June of 2023 exam really got very detailed in the nature of the critical response questions that the students had to review, where one of the questions focused on the functions of the World Bank, which is like a very detailed portion of the two-year Global Studies curriculum, which has not appeared on any Regents' exam in the past. So, you know, as always, as I've shared in past presentations, all of these results, as the teachers go through them, they look at how the students perform in each of the individual standards assessed on the exams, and make the necessary adjustments in the curriculum to make sure that they accommodate for that. The other exam that was administered for the first time in a number of years this past year was the U.S. History exam. We had 574 students sit for the U.S. History exam this past June. Again, the U.S. History exam hasn't been administered since 2019, and we had a passing rate of 96% on that exam, and there were a total of 10 students that received an appeal for approximately 2% of that population. The last exam was the Common Core English exam. We had 269 students taken in June of 2023, and the reason why that number was low is because during the 2023 school year, we went back to our original pre-COVID practice of having some populations of our students take the exam in January for a variety of different reasons. Some of them might be taking AP exams later on in the school year, or the number of exams in general that kids might have to take. And so that way, you know, junior year is a very test-intensive year for students. So, oftentimes, kids are given the opportunity to take it in January rather than June to lighten some of the preparation that they have to do at the end of the school year. So, we went back to that practice, where we had a number of our students take the exam in January. So, if you look at just our June of 2023 results, which is 269 students, we had an 89% passing rate of that population. However, if you factored in the students that took the exam in January of 2023, total, that 596 students sit for the exam for an overall passing rate of 92, and we had a total of 19 students that still who scored between 50 and 64, for roughly 3%. So, the copy of the presentation that I uploaded for the board into Board Docs on Friday didn't include this slide, but I felt it important to give a slight update based upon something that occurred this past Monday, where the Blue Ribbon Commission on Graduation Measures, you may have read about this in the paper over the last couple of days, did a presentation to the Board of Regents regarding proposals for the future of not only graduation requirements, but also Regents' exams. That top graphic is a graphic that you've seen over the last couple of presentations that we've done for the Board of Education, where we started to talk about pathways. And this has been a conversation that's been happening over the last few years, where the Regents is exploring alternatives to the very traditional graduation requirements that students are expected to complete in pursuit of a Regents' exam, where, in very basic terms, they have to have 22 credits, they got to pass the English Regents, they have to pass a Math Regents, they have to pass a Science Regents, a Social Studies Regents, and then some other pathway, where in the vast majority of cases across the state, that usually involves an additional Regents' exam in order to be able to get a diploma. However, they're now talking about a variety of different options to have, move away from some of those traditional practices of having students take all of these various Regents' exams. The Commission provided 12 different recommendations, one of them being finding alternate assessment opportunities for students, where students might, similar to what we talked about in those past presentations, complete a rigorous pathway in a specific content area in lieu of doing some of the additional Regents' requirements that have been traditionally recommended for kids. Basically, their plan is, after this presentation that was just given on Monday, the Board of Regents is going to review it and consider it for possible adoption, and then come up with a timeline in terms of what that's going to ultimately look like. Obviously, that's going to take a number of years before we see any ultimate implementation of any of this. I included a link up there. If anybody wants to, like, take a... The link will be included for the presentation that the board receives, but I can post this up on the district website as well, so that way people can review the actual copy of the presentation that was given to the Board of Regents. For us, however, moving forward, in the near future, Regents' exams are still here. The high school just sent out notification to parents reminding them, and students, that August of 2023 was the final date that these appeals that I've been speaking about are being offered to students, meaning the COVID appeals process no longer exists. There's no longer a 50 to 64 opportunity for kids to have that graduation requirement waived if they scored that on a Regents' exam. It is back to the pre-COVID. You must get a 65 on the Regents' exam in order to be able to meet these requirements, and if you do not get that 65, you will have to retake the exam in order to be able to qualify for fulfilling that requirement. The pre-COVID appeals and superintendent determinations are still in place for various populations of students that may need some of those safety nets. However, in general, that 65 requirement is back in place, and there's no longer an opportunity to appeal with a lower score. And that's it. I welcome any questions. Thanks, Michael.
I'd like to welcome Dr. Koyfman to the meeting and open the floor for the board members to ask any questions for the presentation.
I did have a couple of questions.
Sure, sure.
I won't ask all of them.
It's okay.
Well, the one question I had for, now that I know that the appeal process is no longer available for the ones that were appealed, was there a minimum class score that they had to have?
That you have to pass the class.
So, just a 65?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And then for the Physics, or for the Chemistry and Physics results, the classes, the faculty for AP and Regents, is it the same, or do they have different teachers for those classes?
There's a variety of different teachers that teach. You know, we have multiple sections of AP Physics and Physics classes, so there are multiple teachers that teach that.
Okay, and so for the Physics class, is that an elective? So, for students that want to go further into AP classes, they have to take Physics in order to move on? Or is it just that they wanted to sit for the Physics exam? Because you said you only needed two or three?
In order to get the Regents with Advanced Designation, you only need to pass two Science Regents' exams.
Right.
So technically, if you want to continue on in any Science or Math, Math is three Regents' exams, all of that is elective. It's up to the student.
Got it. Okay.
So, there were some, obviously, positive trends, but there were also some negative trends. What is the administration's expectation, or how did it compare to what you went into the school year and the testing year last year, hoping for and working towards in the scoring and the migration of the scores?
Right. I mean, obviously, we're always looking to, you know, there's been lots of conversations about the impact on learning regarding COVID. So, you know, we continue to look for, obviously, continued improvement. So, you know, if you look at, I'll take Math, for example. You look at the upward trend in Algebra, and you look at the upward trend in Geometry, but we were watching that cohort of Algebra II kids to see what the implications were, because again, they sat for, they took Algebra I during that COVID year. So, we, you know, when you talk to the teachers, they were making various curricular adjustments in order to be able to support that cohort of kids, to make sure that some of the skills that they might have been lacking in Algebra I were supported for them in taking the Algebra II exam. Now, they can go back to more of a traditional curriculum, because the Geometry students that sat for the exam last year, that are in this current year's Algebra II cohort, have received two years of full in-person instruction. So, now, we're going to be watching the Regents' results moving forward, where hopefully, we will again see that uptick again on the Algebra II Regents' exam. So, you know, obviously, the goal always is as much improvement as we possibly can get, but also sort of identifying from cohort to cohort how the populations of kids are performing.
Do we know how other school districts have fared in this realm as well?
Yeah, that's one of the things that we're actually waiting for, is like the real detailed reports, where, similar to what I was talking about, that question, in fact, this is part of the conversation I had with Mr. McElroy. When we were looking at that World Bank question on the Global exam that I was talking about, for us to be able to look at, how did the students, especially on that specific question, if, you know, a good number of our kids have difficulty with that question, is that something that's within our own curriculum that we need to reinforce more, or was it more question-related, where we see the results across the entire state of kids that had difficulty on that question? Those are some of the answers that, as we dig deeper into the Regents' results, that, you know, assist us in some of the instructional decisions that we make on our end.
And when will that information likely be available?
Yeah, we're still waiting. I mean, one of the, just so that you know, the original plan for the presentation tonight was to do both of the grades, 3 through 8 testing results, and the Regents' results combined into one presentation. But because we only have the local results for the 3 through 8 testing, and usually, if you remember, that presentation is not only our local results, but in comparison to Orange Osterbosse's and to the entire state, to be able to show some of the trends, we're not even, we can't give that presentation yet because the data hasn't been released from the State Ed Department. So, we're, it's late, actually. This presentation was previously given last year in September, and the 3 through 8 testing was in October, but we still don't have the information available to us yet.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions?
Just one more. Just one more, and in terms of phasing in towards like new standards, is that already being done? Are we, um, in, for like the new sciences, or are we behind on that?
No, that, that's, we're actually, if, if you, if you look back at that present, the slide on the global Regents exam, the same is happening with the science exam, where the reason why I asterisked and starred those exams was because the state gave you various options in those years of, there was the old global exam, there was the framework transitional exam, and then there was the new exam. You had an option in terms of where you were in your own curriculum development, in terms of what exam you were going to be administering to your kids. So we're doing the same exact process on the science side, where as the state has mapped out of when the new transitions are for the new exams, it's actually happening not just in science, it's also in math. That they're moving from the Common Core exam to the next-gen math exam. We have it all mapped out the same in all of the various content areas.
Anything else? Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Next up, we have the approval of the minutes for October eleventh. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have, uh, action items in Section Nine. First up is a Acting Superintendent of Schools Resolution.
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of resolution contracts, there's a number of them all the way through. Do we have any questions on any of the contracts? Or the approval of the task forces that are on the list? An approval of the Annual Professional Performance Review, APPR Hardship Waiver Resolution. If there are no questions, may I have a motion to approve the rest of that category?
Motion?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Policy manual, first reading policy. Do we have any questions or a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Personnel, Ms. Hock?
Thank you. I respectfully request approval for the items listed under Personnel, eleven-one to eleven-eighteen.
Are there any questions?
I'm sorry.
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Business and Financial?
I also respectfully request the approval of the Business and Financial items, twelve-point-one through twelve-point-eight.
Any questions? Have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Report by Student Board Representative.
All right, thank you, everyone, for tonight. I would like to extend my heartfelt thanks for everyone coming out tonight to begin this meeting. Um, serving as a student board rep for this month has probably been one of my favorite months so far. One of my big tasks this month was visiting the elementary school, so I visited Pine Tree and Smith Clover this month to start it off. So first, I'm gonna talk a little bit about Smith Clover, it's a K-one school, of course. The focus is on fostering a community that embraces all cultures. This was evident in the students' art projects, which ranged from the Hispanic Heritage Month to celebrating the ABCs, it was amazing, I really loved it. And the autumn-themed activities, each project was not just creatively engaging, but also served as an educational purpose, teaching skills from following multi-level instructions to perfecting fine motor skills like coloring within the lines. Witnessing the students' enthusiasm and bright smiles as they created their artwork was truly heartwarming. A visit to the classroom was, during their community day, was a surprise for me. They were getting to watch how pizza's made, so that was pretty interesting. And how happy they were, I wish I had that opportunity. Um, and just hearing how much they love Smith Clover really, really brought some bright into my life, whether it was from answers from recess to my favorite learning, was really a great impact on the school. We continue with the tour with going to the gym, cafeteria, computer lab, and the unique class setups. Here, I saw two special education classes join for Friday Friends session, emphasizing social inter- interaction and inclusivity. It was also inspiring to see the different classes during recess, which included an EONL, ENL class, a first grade class, and a special education class during recess, to really mirror what the real world looks like. I thought that was a really interesting part. And the key takeaway from the school's visit was the true love philosophy that I definitely thought was a really nice add to the school. Um, so then, my second visit was yesterday at Pine Tree, had a great time. During my visit, I had conversations with students ranging from, um, we talked about buses, recess, classrooms, what was their favorite part about Pine Tree, what could we see improvements on? And one thing that I thought was really amazing to hear from the students was how much they enjoy their teachers and their staff. It seems to be a really positive impact on what's going on in this school, is something I think that we need to take note. Um, and I think we also, one thing that I think we can look to improve on is education in bus safety. Many of the students had worrying concerns about how loud it is, and sometimes, I do agree, it can be loud, so we can see if we can, if there's any ways that we can improve our bus safety for our students. They also had a double recess this week, which I thought was a really nice reward for achieving their kindness reward. Like, they had, every class had hearts, so then, once you reached enough hearts in the school, they got a double recess. So they got to choose, and I thought that was a really interesting kind of method. I was, I kinda had that when I was younger, but I didn't sadly. Um, and also, let's just wrap it up with, um, I just, also, we had a few other things going on in the high school this month. I worked with getting, um, the, we had the October Assembly this month, so we had a guest speaker come in for all the ninth graders, which I, I personally attended as a lead mentor myself. We, the assembly focused on really just the importance of high school, the importance of leadership and taking action in your life to find your dreams, whether that's, if you don't know yet, that's okay. It's finding that pathway throughout high school and the importance of trying, because if you don't try, there's nothing that's gonna be able to happen. But for the lead mentors, we also got an aspect on how we can better help the freshmen going out, and even if it is our final year, how we can take this assembly further into our careers. And lastly, I'm gonna highlight the student committee that has been formed in the high school. This committee is, I think, probably the most favored I've ever been on. The students there really wanna make a change in the school. We really see that there's many aspects that we can change and improve, and they wanna make a difference, and I'm very, very glad to be involved with it. So, yeah, that's all for today. If anyone has any questions, let me know.
I have a follow-up question for you.
Yes.
So, and I know we've, we've chatted a little bit about you bringing back some updates too. So I think last time you spoke in regards to the high school, that you guys were getting ready to have a town hall?
Yes.
And discussing that the students were trying to come up with a compromise to the ten-ten rule?
It has been done. We are, we are down to a-
Love that update.
We are at a five-five hallway, usually, it's just, yeah, five minutes, and then usually hallway sweeps don't occur for another minute or so, but usually, the hallways are pretty clear now, it's pretty nice, I would say.
Okay, good. And the student committee that you have now, is that something that you formed, or that was?
That was formed by administration, but it's selected by teachers, and then they nominate a student. And then, we, we're meeting tomorrow to discuss further plans on what we wanna take as our first initiative, cause it's run by, it's, it's all students together. And then, their plan is to also be communicated to the students that this committee is working in the school to better kind of let students know what's going on.
Okay, so how many students are on that committee, do you know?
I would say there might be no more than seventeen.
Okay.
Yep. And we try to meet usually either weekly or bi-weekly, that's at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you, as always, Mr. Martinez, an excellent report. Next up, we have the report by Board of Education Committees, Visitation, Mr. Anderson?
Uh, sure, Visitation. We, uh, we did have a chance to go see two schools, as everybody knows, or in case you don't know the community. The Board is tasked with seeing every building in the district at least once every year. Uh, we got a fairly large district with seven schools and over, I think it's about twelve buildings we actually have to look at. And it's a good example for two, for the community to see just how much stuff we actually have to do to maintain these buildings, especially with the upcoming bond referendum on December seventh, uh, December fifth, excuse me. Uh, so on October nineteenth, we did attend and get to visit the middle school with Mr. Berger and Mr. Sullivan. Uh, I'll walk you through some updates that they've done since we saw it last year. Uh, they seal-coated and restriped the entire parking lot, repaved a side lot completely. They repainted the white columns and white overhangs around the building. They installed a new gas shut-off valve, which is outside the building, with an internal release, which allows them to shut off and turn on the gas and gives no odors in the school building. Um, there's new athletic field signage, there's new instrument storing shelving that was installed in-house. Excellent, really, uh, well-done. They reorganized the library with new shelving and new workstations, and they're still have an ongoing project in the library with new furniture and new chairs, new book displays, new smart panels, TVs, and they're redesigning the checkout area right now. They also updated the classroom doors and windows on the exterior for safety with numbers, so that, you know, police or firemen could know where they are on the outside. Um, they've repainted the auditorium and put in new carpet. Uh, they installed ten additional safety cameras, which took out any blind spots they had in the school. Um, they also cleaned up the library courtyard and made it a lot more level. If any of you have seen in the past, it's been, you know, a lot of different, uh, landscape areas here. It's nicer, level now, and that's something maybe in the future we could look to utilize. They put new shades on the classroom doors for safety, so if you have a piece of glass on the door, and God forbid, something's happening in the building, you know, inside can shut the shade, and somebody's walking by, they, they don't have a chance to look in and see are there any people in there or not. And they put up some beautiful new signage, uh, that can be seen from both sides in the gymnasium and the auditorium. And as far as a wish list for the middle school, there are some stuff that's kind of already in budget, and some stuff is, uh, um, in the new project that we're contemplating. Uh, so they're looking to add a background screen in the auditorium, new lighting in the auditorium and the stage, both of these are for the plays, new curtains in the auditorium, there's gonna be new LED lights in the audience, which will make it a light a lot brighter and be a lot more efficient. Uh, new carpeting in the auditorium, and they're moving the sound booth and the lighting booth to the back, from the back of the stage to behind the seating area. And the things they're looking for possibly in the new project would be updating the tech rooms with some newer machinery, cause a lot of the stuff is very old there. Um, they need some more modern digital equipment. The tech ed is a requirement at the mid-school, so we're looking to really up, upgrade those areas. They're looking to maybe install a new three-D print, printer. And update, updated woodworking equipment is needed, updated science labs, also kind of very old, we toured them. And, um, again, possibly using the outside library courtyard as outdoor space is something to be considered if the referendum passes in December. And that's essentially the middle school. And the other school we did have a chance to look at was Pine Tree with Dr. Morales. Some of the updates since we've been there last. Uh, there's, again, new classroom safety door shades, that's something that's going on throughout the district. Again, new outdoor window numbers and door numbers available for police or emergencies from the outside. Uh, they installed some new brighter parking lot lighting, makes it a lot brighter than it was. Most people like it, there are a few people who I think, uh, think it's too light, uh, some of the neighbors. Uh, they have new paving and striping in the lot. Uh, they installed a new island in the knot, in the lot, parking lot with shrubs and trees. Uh, they had a new hot water tank installed. Um, they've also updated the library with new shelving, new organization. Uh, they updated the windows in the gymnasium to open during, uh, you know, hot times of the year, so they can get some air in there. They, they have a new mobile smart board, uh, and something we, it's not really new, but I just thought I'd mention, they have this Pine Tree Care Closet, where they give out coats and clothes and school resources to those that need it. So if anyone has any donations, uh, they would certainly welcome it. Uh, things that are ongoing and are looking for, uh, they wanna also update their new computer room in the Library Media Center, they wanna get some high-top tables, um, some couches to make it a lot more modern. They wanna reopen the school store, which would sort of sell school supplies to children. Uh, and things that they're really looking for, possibly in the new budget, would be a new upper playground, the, the upper playground equipment that we viewed is over thirty years old. Uh, a new sound system in their auditorium for plays and shows, and three new boilers, because they're all from nineteen sixty. So, uh, if we can get this, uh, referendum passed, they will get new boilers. And last but not least, our next Visitation meeting will be here at Central Valley on November thirtieth.
Thank you for that very thorough update. Uh, next up, Policy Committee.
Yeah.
Ms. Toner?
Uh, in addition to the policies that were presented tonight for our first reading, at our November ninth meeting, we reviewed the NISBA Policy Zero-One-Hundred, which is nondiscrimination and equal opportunity. Uh, the committee discussed combining two policies, two avowing policies, number thirty-four-twenty, which is nondiscrimination and anti-harassment, and number sixty-one-twenty, which is equal opportunity, into one policy. We decided to send these policies to our attorneys for their feedback on combining them. At our next meeting, we will, one second, I'm sorry. We will be discussing Policy Number Five-Seven-Six-One, which is drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers and other safety sensitive employees, based, um, based on Policy from NISBA, eight-four-fourteen, and also Policy Number Four-Thousand, Four-Seven-Six-Two, which is graduation ceremonies. Dr. Hassel will be present at the next meeting, and that next meeting will take place on December twelfth at twelve noon. Reminder, I'd really like to remind everyone that these meetings are open to the public. So, our next meeting will be at the Ed Center on twelve-twelve at twelve noon. Um, anything you wanna add to that?
I don't, I just wanted to bring up that there was a policy that came to my attention this weekend that I just, it doesn't have to be added to that meeting, cause I know we already have an agenda set, but Policy Thirty-two-eighty, which is our facilities usage, there is an addendum that goes to that policy, which is Thirty-two-eighty-E dot one. That is the, I'm gonna tell you exactly what it says. It's considered the facilities use fee schedule, and that has not been updated. So I was referencing it this weekend for a community member, and I noticed this. So I just wanted to bring it to the attention, so that we can add that to the list at some point to review it.
Following agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Audit Committee update, reports were provided in the Section Twelve tonight, under Business and Financial. Uh, the team from the Finance Department is working on RFPs and presentations that will be done for new audit firms, um, that will be looked at by the committee later. And I checked the calendar, I do not see unless I'm mistaken, we don't have any meetings scheduled for December. Correct?
I thought we had scheduled one, Michael.
It's not showing up in my Google Calendar, so we'll have to check with Michael.
I'll review that.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. Reports by Board and Central Office, Ms. Toner?
Just happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
I'll, I'll second that, uh, happy Thanksgiving, thank you for the presentations. Have a good night.
Uh, I'd like to congratulate our poster contest winners and the National Merit Scholarship students. The little ones were so adorable, just too cute. Um, thank you for the Regents' presentation, Dr. Hassel. And to everyone, have a good evening and a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Uh, thank you to all of our volunteer firemen. They came out to discuss the policy, I think it's an important policy for all of us to look into and hopefully support as a board. Um, also, it just, the thing I'd like an update on is how the middle school's doing with the sub, with the change in schedule. So I know we changed some stuff around, so I'd like to see some of the stats, and hopefully, they're in a positive way, and that's now that we're three months into the year.
Yep.
So just on a follow-up.
Yep, I can get that.
Other than that, have a great Thanksgiving, be safe out there.
Um, I echo what the other Board members said, I just wanna add a thank you to Mrs. Caldwell for the invitation for the Sapphire Multicultural Night, it was a great event. Suzanne and I were able to attend that, and, um, it was, it was fun. It was, uh, great to see all the kids in their, in their heritage cultural clothing, which was wonderful, and to be able to taste all- which was wonderful, and to be able to taste all of their food and see them so excited for the night. We approved this evening the task force, which was in regards to curriculum. That's been something that's been kind of in the works for a couple of years after I had attended a webinar in regards to board members sitting in on curriculum meetings. And I was able to sit in on one with Mr. Kravitz, and I believe it was our elementary school. It only went up to fifth grade. And really, it's not just myself. It's, there's a couple of us that are on the task force, and our role is really just exactly that, to sit in and listen and just kind of be part of the conversation so that we can hear what's happening at the ground level with our faculty and staff. And I just think it's important, since we get a lot of questions from the community as to why this, why that, why was this curriculum chosen, and it's nice to be able to hopefully get some of that feedback directly from our teachers and be able to share that with the community. So I look forward to some of those future meetings as well. I want to encourage everybody to get out and vote for the capital budget, which is coming up as we discussed this evening. There's a ton of information on our district website, so please, if you should have any questions regarding that, reach out to Patrick or visit our website. I want to also thank the fire and EMS for coming this evening, and hopefully we can follow up with that. And I'm going to give a special shout-out this evening, and tiny bit biased, because my daughter is on the team, but I want to give a special shout-out tonight to the girls' soccer. I know that this weekend, we had a lot of our athletes competing at the state level, so it's definitely something to be recognized. I unfortunately can't say that we brought home the top prize, but it was still a great weekend, and I just want to say thank you to the coaches and our athletic department, and to Ms. Hock and everybody else who makes it possible that we're able to take this journey up there. It was a great experience for the girls, and we'll go back again next year. So, thank you.
I'm just going to say thank you all for coming out tonight, and thank you for the presentations, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Have a good night.
Big shout-out to the eight-to-our cities athletes who signed the national intent letter to play for the college sports. Thank you for high school admin team and athletics for hosting that event, and have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
I too would like to recognize the fall athletes and coaches, specifically those who participate at the state level girls' soccer. We had two divers from the swimming and diving team. We had a doubles team in girls' tennis and also boys and girls' cross country. So congratulations to our athletes and our coaches. I also want to congratulate our new inductees to the Tri-M Music Honor Society. And if you haven't had an opportunity to get to the high school to see the painting project that was completed by the National Art Honor Society, it is worth the trip. Thank you.
I just want to wish Elsie the best while she was out, and I want to wish her a very speedy return. Best of luck to Elsie. We had a DLC meeting on November sixth. We established the goal of digital citizenship and internet safety, so I just want to have everybody be on the lookout for upcoming events that we're going to be hosting and advertising with the goal of supporting both our students as well as our families on just how to, you know, be aware of their online lives. I've been at a lot of the different events that people are speaking about. We've had a lot of success in a variety of different areas between sports, concert season starting, the school play, window painting. I was at up at the high school the other day. We have many talented students. And in the season of thanks, I'm just super thankful for our kids and for our staff that support them, and I wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Thank you very much. Congrats to all of our students who were recognized tonight, both our fire safety poster winners and our National Merit Scholarship students. Right before the DLC met, our health and commit, our health and wellness committee met, and a number of things were discussed. One, Ms. Lynn Prestia, our new food service director, food service, director of food services, she gave us food samples of fresh vegetables that they're serving in the high school. She was very open to a lot of different ideas, and she was great in terms of providing insight into the new or the expanded free, free breakfast and lunch program for our students. One of the things that we did is we sent a survey to the members of that committee, and we're still receiving their feedback, but two areas pretty much jumped out. One was continued concern about overall use of vapes at, from the middle school on up. That's a concern. In addition to that was concern about just overall student and staff wellness, and what can we as a district do to focus on that? So that will be one of the focuses for the committee going through the year. There is, we met with people from some of our local food pantries who have talked about the need to increase the amount of food that is there. They're, they're running very low, especially at this time of the year. So there is a district-wide initiative, K-12, to do our best to help those in need. One of the things I also want to point out, there is also a cold weather accessory drive sponsored by our MWTAs LAP committee. For those that don't know, that committee does a lot of good throughout the entire school year. So they are organizing that, and we're participating in that as well. The kickoff to concert season, I think, really started with the faculty recital on the twenty-seventh. I wasn't able to go, but one of the things that was great is you could go and purchase the show afterwards. So if you haven't done that yet and you still want to see it, you can still do that. Report cards were our finishing touches. We put the, the elementary report cards were shared with staff last week. The feedback was elicited, and those final changes were submitted to the MCC for the, the inputting of all that, that final stuff. So on December sixth, I'll have a more detailed update with regards to the elementary report cards. And that's it. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving, everyone.
So I'd just like to remind everyone, again, Stacy, you mentioned this, but on December Tuesday, December fifth, twenty-twenty-three, so that's right around the corner, we're holding a referendum, capital project referendum. We'll be asking the residents to approve a proposition to fund capital projects with a total cost of ninety-eight million dollars. And while that may seem like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money, we're asking, or we, this ask or this authorization would be touching on almost every building in the district, all seven schools, five non-instructional buildings. And we've talked about it. It's a very nuts-and-bolts project. If you consider roofs, fire alarms, P A systems, and heat and ventilation, that's approximately eighty percent of the project, those items alone. So we're proposing the project with no tax impact, and we're able to do that because we'll be reimbursed seventy percent through Building Aid, through New York State. We've saved money into our capital reserve, approximately twenty-four million dollars. So twenty-four percent approximately of that would be funded with the savings from the reserve, and the remaining funds or whatever would be offset by retirement of existing debt. So zero tax impact for a large and overdue project. So again, please mark your calendars. Tuesday, December fifth, twenty-twenty-three is the date for the capital referendum. And, and we put this before the voters, because in New York State, we have to have the authorization or the approval of the community to initiate a project like that. So with that, I hope everyone has a great Thanksgiving and a very nice evening. Thanks.
I'm just going to echo it again. Tuesday, December fifth, please get out and vote. We need every vote possible. As Patrick said, just for very basic things, no tax impact. Everyone have a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Just echoing everyone's sentiments, and thank you to all the presenters tonight. Have a happy Thanksgiving and safe travels home.
So two things, really. First, very happy to see the finally upward trend post-COVID of the grades. That's great to see. I know it's not across the board, but for the most part, it's trending in the right direction overall, so that's great to see. So thank you for that update. And to piggyback off of what everyone is also referring to. So I'm, this is my first year being on the visitation committee with, with some of my colleagues here, and they, they make fun of me, because every building that we've gone into so far, I want to see the boilers. There's been a lot of talk about them, about how horrible they are and everything, but you know, it's, it's, a lot of things are talked until you actually see it yourself. They're horrible. They are, they are not old. They're, they're decrepit. They're, um-
Ancient.
They're what?
Ancient.
They're ancient.
Ancient.
Ancient. Thank you. They are artifacts, and they will go, like Mr. McGilroy noted, in Pine Tree. And it's just a matter of time. It's not even like, will they want that? They're way past their, their, their death date. So please just think of the kids and what that, what impact that will mean for our communities and for our parents and our caretakers if, in the middle of winter time, a boiler goes out, or a couple boilers go out. You know, I know there's backups, and I think in the mail that I went out, I know in the mail that went out to everyone, there's a little picture of the boilers. And Andre and the team have taken us and seen, and they've given us really detailed information about these boilers to the point where we know it's just a matter of time. So to be honest, if you really care about the facilities that our kids are in for five days a week, vote yes, so. And happy beginning of the holiday season. That's all.
Thank you. I have a few things. It's really an echo of what most has been said already, the thank you to the fire and EMS spokespeople. We really appreciate the presentation. Congratulations to all the fire poster winners. I also want to say I attended the CLU show at the high school. They did a fantastic job. And, and on the second day, there was a little bit of turmoil with the set, but they got right in front of it and really made it work, and the, the audience really enjoyed it. So thank you to the arts team over there and the theater team. I, I want to also echo, December fifth, please encourage your neighbors, your friends, whoever you know in the community, to get out and vote. We do need your support. This infrastructure vote is important for building maintenance and building upgrades. There's nothing spectacular. We're not talking about, you know, backyard pavilions and anything like that. These are necessary repairs to support not only our kids, but the teachers, faculty, and people who work within the building so that there's a good, strong environment for them to work in. So please get out and vote for the bond referendum. We're asking you to do that for the whole district. It maintains the buildings and draws more people into the community. I also want to wish the superintendent a very speedy recovery and wish her well as she's out, and a very happy Thanksgiving to everybody in the community. And with that being said, may I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss a personal matter?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.